Okay ladies and gentlemen, the hour's arrived. I call this meeting over. Mr. Johnson, I want to ask if you will to give the invitation please.
I apologize again for allowing us to come in to handle the city business. I ask you to look down and do us wisdom and knowledge, understanding of what we're about to take. I ask you to bless our city, nation, state, so that it's only about to build us safe and shut in. All believe in your name under God, amen.
Amen. The stand please, the leaders of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, I had, um, Bernie's to put a, um, fuel, um, service, uh, credit machine into our fuel tanks out of the airport. Uh, the thing is worn out and, um, Cody and I have, uh, have worked and, um, we've got the thing, uh, well, we've done the arrangement coming up to get help some type of fuel supplier to help in putting in a new unit to handle all of our building at the, at the, uh, fuel pumps out of the airport. But I've just talked with the attorney and he, uh, he's been working on it, doesn't have it ready, but he, uh, says he and I will get together with the ideas that I've got and him too, and have it ready for, to present, um, Thursday night. I was gonna ask for amendment, the reason I said, "Let me," so if you will understand that, we're gonna wait and handle that Thursday night. Uh, other than that, you've got the agenda before you. Uh, is there any additions, corrections, or, uh, that you, anyone would like to make to the, uh, agenda? Here none entertain a motion, do we approve the agenda?
I oppose you.
Motion made by Mr. Griffin, do we approve the agenda? And I think I heard a sanctum for Mr. Johnson. If there's other discussion about the agenda, here you none, a call for a vote. All in favor of approving the agenda as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here you none, we've got our work cut out for us. Uh, first item on there is the watershed protection plan. There is a, I don't remember exactly the number of years, uh, in between these things, but it's a quite lengthy period of time. Um, the, uh, the thing has been in the works for some time. I think if y'all had to look, uh, and I think this thing is good, I forget the amount of years. At any rate, this is something that, um, has been in the works for some time and finally has bailed to us. It is complete and just for your information, um, it's before you. Anybody else know anymore about this than I do? If, uh, Opie was here, Opie, uh, and I talked about it some, and he was extremely familiar with it. And he said it was all in order, routine, and he had looked at it and that everything was fine. Uh, that's, um, the city will begin immediately. Plan must be completed by December 20th, and we got it ahead of time, so we're in order. This was also, uh, under the supervision of, uh, Hossetter and Associates in Macon, who helped to get this done. And, uh, it's all completed and delivered. And if you'll look, as I've been telling you, there's somewhere here that this covers a fairly good span of years. But at any rate, if you want to, we won't make any official ruling or acceptance or anything else on this until Thursday night. But if you would get a chance to look over it, if you've got any questions, um, ask somebody besides me. But I'll begin to study a little bit more too, I think I'll have more time. But it's, uh, it's all, all in order. Any other comments or reference to this, um, watershed protection plan? Here you none, it's bullet item two. You've got before you a new contract that, uh, they've asked us to sign with our prison work detail. Um, there's no change in the fees, uh, and all of the rules that we signed that we'll agree by. If you'll look back at, um, uh, the appendage attached to this thing, the final sheet, it says we're paying thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars per year, uh, for, this is a one-year agreement with, uh, Department of Corrections for the prison details that comes over here. They'll say there'll be as many as ten, uh, workers coming with one correctional officer, but both the time we just have three, four, or five. But at any rate, do, uh, you want, we can wait till Thursday night to handle this too, if you like, or we can handle it now. I don't think there's any rush on it.
I'm just doing Thursday night.
Thursday night will be fine. Okay, good, moving along, good. Okay, also, Eric, you have, uh, item number three, discussed purchase orders for GSP construction.
Right, um, like I said, we've taken and, you know, started to work on the GSP station and whatever else out there. Moving on quite well from what I've been out there and looked at and what the mayor tells me and everything. But the only thing I wanted to take and bring up, and where we did have to take and pay out some invoices last week and everything, and had not been privy to them, whatever else. The council needs to be taken and made privy to the invoices that are, what we're doing and everything else. Now, that also, we've stated in the past, I need to have purchase orders attached to it, whatever. That's all fine and well, but, so we're not taking and just having the phone call that says, "Look, I need to pay this and whatever else." We need to be, we need to look at these bills, we need to look at these invoices and whatever else, and have an opportunity to, uh, prior to taking and just paying the invoices out on it and everything. Now, that's my opinion, I don't know where the council stands on it, but we need to take.
Eric, can I explain what's going on?
You can go ahead, that's fine.
All right, I mean, okay. All right. What we did basically is we went and got bids from H&amp;H and Handy Andy to dry in the structure. Then we got two bids for Evans Concrete and Block Concrete to do the concrete work that's been out there. We only got one bid for a block layer because there was only one that even returned calls to put the blocks out there. I know we're sort of going fast, but now, we have issued one purchase order to Handy Andy because they have a low bid on drying it in for basically a hundred thousand dollars. We purchased, we got a purchase order for block concrete for three hundred yards. Uh, they have a low bid of ninety-two dollars versus Evans Concrete for one oh five. Now, what's gonna happen, and I, I'm gonna get Greg Gillis, who is the project manager from the state, to come up, uh, maybe Thursday night and go with the whole procedure. And we did this building, what we did is, we would get with Greg, and Greg would say, "I need so many two-by-fours, this, this, and that," on a Monday. Or the Thursday, we'd have a meeting Thursday, because see, they work four days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. On Thursday afternoon, before he left, we would meet and he'd say, "By Monday, I need this sitting on the job to work." So that's what we'll do. Um, Bernice is gonna keep a folder, and what we'll do is she's already got all the invoices and the bids that we've got. And we will be able to tell you every Monday night how much we spent, and we have a file folder. And what I'm gonna do is have some type of, uh, schedule, concrete, you know, if we spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll back that up and where it went into. Now, Greg basically is gonna be able to tell you the stages of what we want to do. Of course, now, they are, they're, they have two or three inspectors that are coming to do their, because they do their own inspection basically. So really, all we're gonna do is basically on Thursday, he's gonna tell me what he needs to do and material he needs for the next week, and that's gonna be my job, is to get that out there to them for the next week. So we are kind of slow in our paperwork, but it happens so fast, and then they were out last week, so, but, we need to keep this up, we'll keep it up on a weekly basis, and every Monday night, I mean, every working session, you will have paperwork and you'll know exactly where, what we spent and what it went into, and the projections for the next two weeks. Okay, so that's what we're saying.
And that's basically what, but we still need to be apprised of what we're doing instead of saying, "Okay, we need to pay Joe."
You're right, you're right.
"We need to pay Bob."
Well, you know, we try to, we.
We're getting this started and understand, we're trying to get it started and move it as fast, rapid pace as we can.
Right.
But like I said, we still need to be apprised of what's going on, how it's coming along with everything else. Other, just right out there and look at it and talk to them and whatever else. The progress is coming along good on the station.
Right.
Ain't nobody questioning that or anything about it, and it's, it's, it's moving along well.
Well, we got the appraisal, uh, figures in, it's one point three million, one point three-two something million is what it's appraised for. So the bank should have our loan ready this week sometimes.
Well, see, another thing that was pressing, Eric, when I called you to, to do this, Charles and I got the architectural drawing, um, deal, it was under the horrible, the same project. We tried to jew the man down to, and he did eighteen thousand dollars for the, uh, for drawings. Well, we wouldn't do that, we went everywhere getting bids, and finally, um, came back to him, and he agreed to come down and set us up a bid for fourteen thousand. Well, uh, I believe who owes it, uh, uh, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Raymond, and myself had asked for a meeting with him and drove to Middletown, Georgia, and met him up there on the lake, and told him what a type we were in, and we were trying to build this thing economically, and we got him to come down to ten thousand, ten thousand dollars. So we came from eighteen to fourteen to ten, and if you think you've overseen it's gonna help lower any more than what I'm doing.
It's just, that has nothing to do with me.
Well, I had another thing, listen, the.
I didn't listen for you, listen, Mr. Senator Hall.
He had done this, well, I want to try to explain to you, that the man had finished his work a long time ago, we didn't have the money here to pay him, and finally, he came in and said, "Mayor, I finished this work, I need a check." And I called you to ask you would it be okay to do this, and, and, and you said it would.
Exactly, that's not what I'm saying, that's fine, and whatever. This is not the way we need to conduct business. We need to take and know what we're paying and everything else. If the bill had been out there that long, why ain't anybody seen it? That's all put out there. Now, ain't there sense in trying to get in a pin contest over what you did or what didn't happen? I'm just trying to tell you, we need to be apprised of what's going on. Now, I mean, we take and have to put our, our okays and monikers on whatever else happens and money that's spent here, just like you have to sign the check. But now, there's, there's no sense in, you know, if it's been out there that long, why haven't, why didn't we see a bill and say, "Okay, we're gonna pay it, it's no big deal." It's not a problem to pay people what we owe them.
Well, it was because we didn't have the money.
Well, that may be the case, but what I'm saying is, if there was a bill out there, we should have already seen it, and then it'd have been fine, "Hey, you know this bill we got?" "Yes, we'll pay."
All right, then, another thing you need to know about this, that perhaps we're negligent, and if we are, I apologize. Uh, Ms. Thompson and I have gone to the bank, we got a Georgia State Patrol Post sixteen checking account. Every single dollar and dime is paid out of that account. Every invoice, every piece of cement, the architectural fix, everything. Every month when the, when the, uh, bank statement comes, everybody in this group can go to say, "Uh, Ms. Thompson, where's the, uh, checkbook for the, for the GSP post?" And you can see every check has been written, I am keeping up with precisely. And Charles and I are bidding this thing, you know we're under the gun to try to provide this thing. We had to bite it off by ourselves, the county wouldn't help us. And we are determined that we're gonna provide a good building at the very cheapest dollar, and we're jewing and conniving every dollar we can, and there's not gonna be a dollar spent that we have hemmed it off, for instance, when we got this bid, like he said, the concrete. All the concrete people, even Block, came in with a higher price. I went out and told him, I said, "Look, now, y'all are local business people here, and we're all trying to provide this thing." He went back out with his people and came from a hundred and five dollars down to ninety-two or whatever. We're jewing everybody down as tight as we can, and we certainly want you to see every dollar that's spent. It's available to you. Also, when we get to things like, uh, doors and other specialty things that will come into that thing, we'll go in there just like we always do and get a purchase order to go purchase that, and it will follow the same procedures. So we're either getting bids or getting purchase orders, and we're gonna provide you with where every single dollar is spent, and we'll inform you everything you need to know.
And that's all I ask.
Right, right. Well, next week, starting next week, we should, our paperwork should be up to date and every, you know, I mean, so she'll keep the file, that, what's going on, and I'll keep a running toe of what's going on, what's been spent, and what we project for the future. Just, you know, and all this stuff, so, these doors that we get from here, it took us a month lead time to get the doors that you said here. Now, this stuff that was built, we've gotta go ahead and get the material down to Waycross for them to build off the caddies and stuff out there. So we're gonna be buying stuff in advance, but you'll know what we spent, where it's going, and how much we are on them. Every work session, y'all should know exactly what the total is, where it is.
But like I said, I mean, that's fine, and that's the only thing I ask.
That's the only way to do it.
That's the only thing, that's the only thing I ask, I mean, it ain't nothing special, it's just.
You asked, where? You asked a question. You made a statement here about debating about locals. So the local people should give them first priority to.
Not necessarily, no sir, because, well, just like the guy that did your heating and cooling for your church, he's gonna give us a bid. You realize what's happening is, we're basically gonna provide material, and as many of the inmates that we can use, we're gonna use them. We're gonna have to get a local heating and cooling guy to oversee it and hook it up, stuff like that. You know, a lot of people don't wanna do that, they don't want to supply material labor and stuff like that. So we're gonna try, we're gonna give everybody locally a chance to bid and hope that. But it's just like plumbing, see, we're probably gonna have to go to Kohl Electric, because we don't have a plumbing supplier.
Now, your man has given, been given an opportunity to do it as well.
But, but I was just wondering, that our local people that they've given opportunity to do that, right? It's just, that's, that's what I was.
I hope we can spend, you know, as much local money as we can, that's, that's, you know, which I'll do that. But I mean, you know, we're not gonna cut our throat for, for.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any more questions about this, uh, item? Okay, let's move on. We've, um, if we had the chance to look at the cemetery, would you pretty much wish to return?
Now, I thought y'all were gonna try to make some little recommendations of what, what is it that you need and what are you looking for?
Well, this is a work session, gentlemen, so let's begin the work. Um, it appears that all of our layout at the, um, at the cemetery has got a lot and a half a lot that's available, which is a good, good size, and yet we're getting more and more people that are being cremated, and, um, they want to buy a smaller segment. So I think, in, in my mind, perhaps we need to, in our design and layout of our cemetery lots that's available. I think the question has been brought to us, can we make available a smaller piece? They don't need that twenty by twenty or, uh, ten by twenty or whatever is half a lot. They need a smaller segment for, uh, cremation where they put their relatives that have been cremated. So I think you would need to try to study the, the plan that we have and make the agenda as to what you let go to do.
Well, and one thing we had talked about was taking one section out there and using it as crematory plots, so you wouldn't have to take, because there's, the places where other people have got lots and whatever else, one of the other sections, I reckon, is across the last road, and making it crematory plots, and making them smaller plots available. I, and that was brought up and talked about, but now, nobody's said, "Yeah, they're."
There's a section for people who want to, but you also want them to be able to cremate the remains in a regular burial section, is I understood it.
Yeah, I mean, if they already own the plot, you know what I'm saying, if they already own the plot and everything, then they can put somebody in there.
If somebody wants to buy just a small plot, just for, you talk about having a section in cemetery just for.
Crematories.
It's not, they already have a lot, they just want a very small plot for crematorium.
Right, I mean, that had been brought up, and I didn't hear anything back one way or the other, I mean.
Well, the, the new section that's laid out out there, okay, just to keep your mind on that. The new section that's laid out, now, of course, everything in the old city cemetery is sold. There's a few little rare spots that I'm gonna try to work with and measure off and do something with. But out at the Lumber City Cemetery, I went out there a year or two ago, they had filled up, and Jeff Jones was looking at it, and poor Kim in there, and said, "Look, we've sold out, we gotta do something." So I went out with my surveying equipment, and I laid out another new section out there in another road, and drew up the plans and got it there, and they've been using it for a year or two, and it's a lot of graves on that side. Of course, I did that, uh, free of charge to the city. And, uh, there's a road up there. Now, what you can do under, uh, uh, under your supervision and direction, uh, I can take. I've brought it up to where there's a street access going through and going out. I can take from that point, and if you want to, um, I don't think the cremating people necessarily want to be put over the corner, so like we bought our corporate section, but, um, there might be, um, and here again, this is something y'all have to decide on. Um, where this road is, we might could go out and get a segment, say, not quite as big as this room or something, and square it off into a smaller, I'd say maybe, see, that's twenty, five-twenty. The little marker that you normally, we, I, I put a lot of my wife's relatives, they're off, we put a lot of them down. It's little two-by-two stone that we put down. But I think you would need another two, three, you need at least four by four. And maybe since it'll, won't mess up with the rest of the layout of the cemetery, uh, you might want to go five by five, then five, four fives is twenty, uh, then you could have, uh, but at any rate, whatever, I've taken the bull by the horns. Now, if you don't make up your mind, you don't work on it, tell me how to lay it out, and then I'll lay it out.
Is that the only issue we addressed into?
Yeah, crematory, crematory remains, yeah.
And, excuse me there, Mayor, um, section twenty-three dash twenty-three, item number five, where it states, "No more than the remains or cremains of one body can be interred in any one lot, except in the case of a mother and children's child." I'm wondering if we might need to reword that there. Um, that's one of the items when these people come to me about the cremains. Um, and the way this got brought about is one of, um, Worth Monument came and saw me, and we, right now, he has a request for a cremains bench, okay? The cremains bench is, is very nice, it's very, it would be something that you could sit on, but that bench is going to hold three bodies, not just one. So he's wanting to, they're wanting to put it in a lot, and that's going to hold three bodies, not just your one body, as stated in our ordinance. So that's how all this got brought up.
What is, what is a cremains bench?
I don't know what a.
It.
It's, I recognize it from what way she's telling it and everything. It looks like a place where like you, you have a mom and a daddy and a son or somebody that's gonna be buried all in the same lot, and cremated, they got a little piece they can put them down in and put the slab back on it.
Yes, it's basically a granite or marble.
It's not a bench like you sit on.
Yes, it will, it will.
That's right, exactly.
Yes.
Well, if they want to do that, they need to buy a twenty by twenty lot, put a bench in a park out there.
It's going to be a granite or marble or whatever stone that they so choose.
Does it have an urn?
Yes, it will have an urn placed in it.
But I don't think that's the same thing that what we're talking about as far as, uh.
But you've got to think about, because of this wording right here. Yeah, because of this wording, you say one body.
Word do that?
Yes, or Mr. Victor.
I'm gonna look at one, see what gets.
Yes, he, he had the drawing. And basically, it would allow the family to go out there and sit.
Did, did he suggest a dimension, Bernice?
He had all the dimensions, but, um, it was, it's on a piece of paper, and I told him that I would bring it to the council, and so on and so forth, and then that's how all this got.
Do you sure have a copy of that?
No, sir, he did not lend me a copy of it.
Do they have a difference in sizes and needs, how many total bodies could be put in?
Well, it's according to what size you build, Commissioner Rainey, um, you know, it would, the, the one he is building for this family will hold three urns.
But they do, they'll hunt this with the whole.
Yes, yes.
It's almost like a moshable limb that you can sit on.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And a suggestion, I, a suggestion here, and I don't know, I, you all are, you're stretched like a rubber band, you have a lot to do. Um, I was told that Swain, Oberenbachsling, has a place laid out that they have where they put cremains. I'm sure Waycross has it. Maybe some of you all need to make a trip and let, go look at what they've got laid out.
Well, all the places I've been with larger cemeteries actually have a moshable limb that's strictly for cremation, but they're drawn that they put these urns in.
Right.
I found that people, something low like that, the way that people desecrate things sometimes, how the world.
We're talking about crematory and what?
Cremains bench.
That somebody can't damage something like that, and you got a body above the ground. If it ain't in them, in a mosh limb.
It's, it's in the bench, what I look.
I know what you're talking about.
Believe me, I swallowed my tongue.
We have two issues here. You got one, the section of the cemetery solely for cremains, and then the deal with people who have cremains, they wanna go in a regular cemetery where the loved ones already there. Mom and daddy were buried, but I don't wanna be cremated, so I don't wanna be next to mom and dad.
But now, she's just asserting another point that I just heard. You mean to tell me this bench is so designed that the urn goes inside of the bench above ground?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Lord, you know, we are getting into a legal dis.
Well, it is a bench, the, it's just like you go in out there and you land the people in.
It's a mosh limb for ashes.
Yes, sir. You can, they seal the actual.
Is that what you're doing? Probably some of that.
Similar to that, but this one was more fancy than, I saw the drawing of.
What's the dimensions of that? Does it give you the dimensions?
I haven't got that far.
Well, that'll give you the size, see, we'll have to make, not, not long, we'll have to prove, we'll have to prove, what now?
It's fifteen length by eight, deep by six and a half feet high.
It'll still take a half of what we've got on there. That'll take a half a lot as we got it laid out now.
This one you could literally sit on.
I know that, but you, according to what he's giving me there, we'll have to study this, y'all. This is a much complicated project. But this one here, this here, each one or another, we've gone over, and see what we can come up with. See if we can't, we oughta be smart enough to make it a little simpler. Okay, let's move on.
You were gonna say something about work detail of the cemetery.
Oh, you want to do that too?
Well, you were saying that.
Well, you know what, I have people coming to me all the time about the, uh, lack of upkeep of the cemetery. Well, as you well know, we've had the prison detail, which does a lot of that, involved in our, um, wastewater treatment plant, and that's cut out on some of their work time. And, um, but if you read this ordinance, it says explicitly, and I've read it studying this, that we are not obligated for the total upkeep of these lots out there. It says that the city will do the best they can, and I don't know exactly if you've looked at that thing, if y'all read it over. You remember, it says, "We will maintain as best we can the cemetery in some good condition." But it specifically gives us a little clearance about weed eating, what is it, uh?
General maintenance.
Cemeteries owned by the city hazlers are not perpetual care cemeteries, and the city is under no obligation to maintain any set of standard for care and upkeep. Although the city does currently provide for general maintenance and care of the cemeteries. Because I, and all these people come to me, of course, are not aware of that. But at any rate, we do need to do a better job. I will admit that, um, some areas of the cemetery, this is a great, one, one family came to me, and because it was over under some trees and whatnot, just really almost in tears about the condition of family cemetery. Well, it was young, young men in it, and it wouldn't hurt them to use a little knife and bush hook too, if they were crying that much over their parents. But at any rate, uh, we do have a care, a maintenance of our cemetery problem, and, um, and we need to address it. All right, move on. Um, item number five, discuss the, um, lease and wastewater services agreement that we got from, um, what's his attorney that we?
I think I need to be in executive session, not here.
All right, let's, uh, would it be in agreement for everybody to move this down the line, and let's take care of the other business and have that in executive session a little later time?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, can I just move forward with the other items, and then when we get down, in case somebody does wanna leave, uh, we get down to the very end, then we'll take that as an item, the last item, is that satisfactory? Or this, this over there, let's skip over that now. Okay, Mr. Griffin, you've also got, you wanna do something about the squash plants, go ahead.
And this is just informational, informational from, for the department heads. Um, and Senator Blake Tillery and everything was at the, our GMA District Nine meeting the other night and everything else. And tax revenue is one of the things, I mean, we're looking at what we've been putting in, the deposits and everything, over the last year and into this year and everything else. Ours is about the same or more that we've been putting in over the last year and whatever else. But one thing we wanna take to make sure that we're looking at, just because we budgeted our twenty percent was X number of dollars and whatever else, we need to be mindful, department heads, looking. Department Heads, looking at what comes in as to what we actually set a budget at for twenty percent of whatever it was, twelve million dollars, is that correct, Mayor? Something like that?
No, thirteen million.
Thirteen million, twenty percent of thirteen million. Be mindful of what's coming in. Make sure you look at your sloths deposits as opposed to just saying, "Well, y'all said I'm gonna have this much." Well, your piece of the pie might not be that much, you're only, you're getting percentages is the way it works and whatever else. So, look and make sure that you take and make sure you keep it at account of what your sloths, what's going in there as opposed to, "Well, this is my portion of it here." Your portion is a percentage, it's not a fixed number. It's a percentage of the twenty percent that we had to take in scroungs to get here and city, for the city and everything portion. So, make sure we look at it. He did say that the revenue, tax revenue throughout the state in most cases was going down, or was, and had been going down this year and everything else. So, with that said, just make sure y'all take a look at it. Don't just let it come up at the, at the last minute and say, "Well, I'm supposed to have this." No, you have a percentage, just make sure that what's going in there is covered, what you have planned to spend or can spend for capital outlay. So, that's just, that's just informational thing, and I just wanna bring it up, because we are here only in the first part of the year, we don't need to get down to the end of it, and then we're first month. So, that's all I have to say about this.
Okay, any other comments, folks, just sloths? Okay, let's move along. Uh, gentlemen, you have a form to be filled out for the Clerk of the Year Award. Uh, you analyze Ms. Bernice, all of her hard work, and you and I, and others get together and see what we might be able to do as a reference to that. The next item, number eight, is, um, Ms. Bernice is a officer, a district officer with the clerks, advanced to that, to that point, and leadership with the city. And they have an international conference that's usually in California or San Diego or St. Louis or somewhere, but it's really, really close, this coming year, uh, where's, what's the location of?
Birmingham.
Over, just over in Birmingham. It probably won't be that close to her again in her career, it'll be in California probably next year, and St. Louis the next, and New York the next, but it's in Birmingham, Alabama, and, um, she would like for us to approve her to attend this conference. It'll cost around fifteen hundred dollars. Is that, is that close?
Yes, sir.
Right, close to that amount of money. And that's in May now, that's, uh, that's next month. So, we'll need to, if you wanna study this a little bit, we'll talk about it first tonight, and, uh, but that's what this entails. The, um, look at the, um, Chamber of Commerce newsletter, any questions about that?
They did have a good turnout at Easter egg, I think.
Okay, that's true. Who was the Easter Bunny? Easter Bunny?
I think it was.
Yes, sir, it's Easter Bunny.
Who was the Easter Bunny? He was a good one.
I think it was her son. I think it was her, Andre's son, I think it was.
No, it wasn't her son.
He was, he was a little short brother.
Yeah. I don't know. He was like, he did a, I don't know what y'all saw, we saw it on Facebook, but that was about the cutest, did, did you see it? You didn't? Uh, that was about the cutest, um, Easter Bunny I've seen around. Okay, um, any other comments about that? Um, water sur adjustments, we'll handle all that. Did, did see this, ladies and gentlemen, that we're down to this solid waste, um.
Set us a comment.
Well, we, you'll handle that now too. Anybody got anything hot they wanna say?
I do.
Last month I come before y'all some training, y'all proved everything except the lifestyle for May, but I have a question, I'm just coming back asking you to approve that for Brian Newell to, to go to Arsenal Investigator in Forsyth in May. He'll be gone for two different weeks in May, May what, seventeenth, nineteenth, twenty-fourth.
What does this mean to you, Coach?
Uh, six hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Per, per time?
Yes, sir.
For, for both, both?
And it might be up to some meals and that too, but I mean, that's pretty much.
So, you're talking about May training for, for one of your firemen, about six hundred something dollars?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Council, you've heard this, you wanna put this on the agenda for Thursday night, or you wanna approve it now?
We're gonna do that one now, I move that we approve Brian Newell's training.
Motion been made second, any further discussion? Here none, call for the law, favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, carry the thing out. Anybody else, uh, yes, ma'am? Come on, come on, come on. Ron can wait.
I can.
Uh, gentlemen, I'd like to, uh, let me see how I wanna put it. I, I want you, I want you, I'll put it very easy. I want you to take a look at, uh, both roundabouts, um, on Pat Dixon Road, especially on Pat Dixon. Um, I'd like for you to look at it, look at the signage of it, I'd like for, for each one of you to please go look at it. Um, I'm thinking we need more signs there, um, especially yield signs on Pat Dixon. You got yield signs on Charles Rogers and Collins, but there's nothing on Pat Dixon. And watch Pat Dixon and Collins Street and zip through there at sixty-five mile an hour and never have to break speed.
They don't stop, they don't slow down.
No, something's got to be done there. I, I don't, I don't know what that's really, I, I'm telling you, we're, we're having accidents at these, um, especially at Collins and, and Pat Dixon.
You think it's because of the speed of people going around it and, and not slowing down?
Yes, but I.
All right, I've got a suggestion for that, I've noticed that too, and, uh, I've got a suggestion for that one, I think that will improve it. I think, um, the circumference of the center is not big enough, and it needs to get out a little bit more to make them where they let.
I would, I would agree with that.
So, I think, um, gentlemen, that one thing at, at, at Collins, I've gone and studied to give it to the business to me, and I think if we just increase the circumference, which will be simply, simple to do, I think it'd slow down that traffic in and out of, of Pat Dixon.
I think you still, on a legal, on a legal side, I still think you need to put those yield signs.
Oh, yeah, and then I think.
Before yield signs.
I think we need to get DLT to come in and give us a, they'll do this for us at no cost.
Right.
DLT will come, even though it's a city street, they'll come in and give us a recommendation on what they recommend, and then I suggest that we follow their direction. But, now, the, um, I, I think that, um, the, any direction, the signs that you put up as long as people can fly and make that little swerve of about fifty-five miles an hour.
Right.
They're gonna continue to do that, so I think we need to probably increase circumference level a bit, and that should, um.
The one at the board education, I think we had one accident there, uh, right, right one at first, somebody runs through it, that, that was a, that was a different field. We actually had one accident with somebody actually in it and hit another vehicle, but that's, I mean, that's it, it worked.
So, you've had, always no problem there?
No problem.
But, still, we need to get the signs.
Right, yes.
And then the same way out there, but I think before we even work on the signage there, gentlemen, don't look at it, see if you agree with me. I think we need to increase the coverage.
I do agree with that, it's small.
Uh, it's, it's small, I think if you do that, it'll slow that traffic down, and that's not very expensive, we can swing that one some way. All right, um, you want, uh, Council, you want us just contemplate what he's asked you down, and if we take some action on the Thursday night? Huh?
We can find him Thursday, see what will come up.
All right. All right, um, anybody else? So, Ron, you're next.
I just wanted to bring some recognition to Charles Washington, he runs a mighty fine fire department as chief and everything else that he is. I went to, I know Dwayne Johnson, I sang him at the funeral there Thursday, but y'all, that was a heartfelt, amazing tribute to y'all's as firefighter, or to the county's volunteer firefighter. That was just, I left there and like, oh, and, um.
He was a city firefighter.
Um, that was just, wow, they did a great job.
We're very fortunate, uh, there's been, um, some questions about our fire chief and, uh, maybe sometimes he may be here and there, but let me tell you what, when you've got a leader that's strong enough, that gets a statewide position and representing us on a statewide basis, we need to thank you quite often.
Amen.
Charles does do an excellent job.
Mr. Team, Mayor.
Pardon?
Mr. Team, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Um, okay, I think, um, entertaining motion, we want an executive session.
We're gonna, we're gonna do the, uh, Mad Council remarks now.
You can, yeah, you can, yeah.
Well, my thing is, uh, I wanna just thank the city and, uh, everyone that helped participate, helped me, uh, our church puts this on for the recognition of Ms. Robson to the, um, died at the museum. We had a bunch of them, and, uh, they really enjoyed it with us. How anybody don't know what he has, is I don't understand, but they never heard tell of it, and some got lost coming, but now they won't come back, and I said, "Oh, y'all, they will be here." But, anyway, seriously speaking, they really, really enjoyed it. Um, the hotel rooms were full, I told them I just want y'all to send somebody.
And you tell them not to come back?
Well, I didn't exactly tell them not to come back.
Then we'll go back next week.
Not that many, no.
They're too much, they're too close.
Okay, but anyway, thank y'all so much, everything went beautiful, they was very appreciative. Um, they brought in all these big, big bishops and they, and they paid money too.
Well, good.
So, thank you so much, and the honor of proclamation from the city.
Well, um, we appreciate you saying that, and I think all of us tried to do a good job. Our mission here is to do a good job, as you know, some of us were out of town and busy.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
But, um, okay, now, anybody else, by the way, now, well, anybody else got anything on your chest?
I'm not a member of the council, but I did place a letter in front of you all that I just received about four o'clock this afternoon. It's time for the environmental review for the housing authority. Please take that and read it, this will be an item that you need to cover Thursday night. And tomorrow, I will be in Waycross for Records, Retirement and Resources Lunch and Learn, um, from about ten thirty to three, if you need to reach me.
Okay, yeah, I had mentioned this, uh, to Ken, that, that's part of his homework this week, he's got a lot of homework. Are there any things in the motion that we go into executive session?
No.
Mr. Johnson, lady of motion, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Bloodworth, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will return.
Y'all having that meeting tomorrow night, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we meet at six o'clock, give those scholarships out.
That's what they say.
The side who's gonna give them.
Yes.
They're gonna give out our meeting in. Give them a little more room, Ken. Entertaining motion, we come back in session?
No motion.
Motion made and executed, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Remy, I believe you've got a response for us. I move that, uh, we assign our attorney, uh, with responsibility of looking into the situation further. Okay, is there a second for Mr. Remy's motion?
I have a second.
Motion is seconded by Mr. Griffin. Any further discussion about the motion? Here none, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none, the motion's carried. Okay, is there anything else that needs to come before the council tonight? Here none, Mr. Johnson?
So moved.